Okay, we're gonna start our special select board meeting. It's town Sangerville Friday, February 18th, 2022, and I've got four o'clock. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all. Lauren is out today, and Bridie has agreed to kind of step in and help us. Basically, we're working on the budget. That's one of our main issues today. Rick Pelleren's joining us. He's on the Budget Committee. So that's kind of, I guess, well, the next item is the town warrant. So you want to do these in order, and then we'll get to the budget?
So I handed out two lists of the general breakdown of the departments, what we budgeted in 2021 and what we budgeted in 2022, so that you could look and see the difference between them. Because we've changed the form that we used to track the budget. I changed it around some, so you weren't comparing apples to apples. And so this allows you to do that. And if you look at it, the issue is Public Works. So Public Works, when we budgeted for 2021, we, in the actual budget, well, there was 150,000. We had more monies outside the budget from the general fund, but that was the amount that was budgeted. So that came out to the 41680. If you do the same 150 for 2022, these are the numbers you get, and your budget for 2022 is 27,000 less than 2021.
Okay, so this is following last year's formula, where we end up at 1 point, 27,000 less?
Correct.
Okay.
If you look at the second page, I used 300.
Second page, it looks like I said page.
No, they don't. One says 150.
Yeah, look at the wrong.
That's the one I just looked at. This is the, this is the one.
A and B.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah, let's, let's see.
Which one are you putting?
B is, B is the higher budget.
Okay.
Two million.
A is 150, B 300.
I have a note to myself, so 150 for everybody, for each budget, so that they're exactly.
A is the small one, B is the big one, right?
Yep.
So they're exactly.
Now, are we looking at B then?
If you look at B, I put in, you can erase the 400,000. I put in 300,000. I decided I didn't need to do more. There's 300,000 in this Public Works line.
Can you go to your A for a minute?
Sure.
It's the same number, right?
That's why I, because I saw 300 there. That's why it confused me.
That's a note to me. So I'm saying cross it out, because it's just Bridie.
Okay, okay.
That's why it was confusing me. Okay.
On the first one, just cross it out.
On A?
And if you could read this, it says 150 in budget for paving. Yep.
Okay.
This is with 300,000. This puts you 123,000 over 2021. Now.
Right, but we got like 700,000 paving.
Yeah, we're gonna get, we're gonna get, these were just to start. I subtracted the 5,000 from contingency, because that is not actually budgeted. That comes out of surplus. It's not raised. It is budgeted, it's not raised. And I believe we can cut up to 44, 450 in administration, making the budget 78,538 over last year. So that's a place to start when you're thinking of, do you want to really look at 700,000? So the next thing I did was I reviewed the revenues and the expenses. Now, in revenues, I didn't, didn't make your copy. In revenues, we estimated that we would take in 620,403. We took in 781622.
Took 180 and more than what we planned on last year.
1612918. So 67 of that was the ARPA money that has to be designated, and I'm not sure.
All right. Can't really count that then.
Can't really count that. You can obviously count the 547, which was the loader, and state revenue sharing came in way above what we thought it would. So there's a good chunk.
So we really got 100?
Yeah, you've got.
Without touching that.
110, Colin Leiberg.
You've got 100 there.
Not counting the.
Levi.
Well, you can't count that 67.
You can't count that, because it's.
We need to get clear as to what we can spend it on, because.
Yeah, there's still a lot of vague every time.
And there's another lot coming. There's another chunk, just the same size.
And every time I read a town using it, they're using it for something different.
Exactly.
So you can't really pinpoint this.
And there is a deadline for filing a report saying what you're going to use it for. So, and it's sometime in April.
Oh, jeez.
Yeah.
And if you don't say what you're gonna, you can't use it?
Yeah, they won't want it back.
Oh.
It really needs to be on the budget.
Yeah, so it really needs to be in your.
We need to spend it.
So.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Well, we don't have to spend it, we have to be able to allocate it.
Yeah.
Obviously.
But I mean, we have to say you're gonna use it for something.
We have to utilize it.
But I don't know, we have to spend it.
No, no.
We have to have a plan.
You have to have a plan, so that you, so that you can fill out this report and say, this is what we're going to do with it when you send us the other half.
Sure, but it doesn't, doesn't necessarily mean you have to have it all spent this year.
No, we could allocate it towards the new town office.
Correct.
Now.
And wait for the other half.
As long as they approve that that's a.
Is that, that's a, sure.
I have a question.
Yes.
I know that Lorna was going to attend a Zoom meeting to, that clarified what these dollars could be spent for. Is that open to anybody, or is that, that Zoom meeting, do you know?
Did it happen?
Yes, sometimes.
It was gonna happen very soon.
Oh, very soon, okay.
If one of us could do that.
I don't know why you can't listen.
She told me exactly when she was going to attend. It's like a two-hour Zoom meeting on that.
She told me, and it just went, I didn't retain it.
I'll let you know.
So.
Okay, March 2nd.
Can you do that?
I, I'll have to look, but I think I probably can, yes.
Because if you can't, I will try to.
Yes, two hours on March 2nd.
And I can't remember if it was morning or afternoon.
That's fine. I don't even know, what is March 2nd?
I was just gonna ask, what day that is. What is it?
Oh, Wednesday?
That's what makes it good.
We have a meeting that day. Well, yeah, we would have a meeting.
What time is it?
It doesn't say, she didn't say. Because she, when I was asking her about the amount of money that we had gotten thus far from Marappa, she had said 67,000.
Is this from MMA?
If it's through MMA, they may actually put it on the site, and you may be able to watch it.
I mean, we do it at home.
At your convenience, yeah.
That'd be great. Okay, all right. So now.
We can check on that once we leave here.
Okay.
It should be listed right on the website.
Okay.
Okay, the next piece of information. I called HRH Smith, actually called Levi. He did get back to me. He says that he is working to have the short report for us next week. That's, hope, that's, you know, that's where his aiming at. He says the preliminary fund balance, we spent over, we spent 108,000 more than we, so fund balance went down 108,000. This is his preliminary figure. I figure it closer to 188.
Going down.
Yeah, fund balance. But he's, he's pretty sure that he's got it right, and he may well, because I'm, I'm looking at what we budgeted in 2021. And that's not the copy. And we we budgeted 960. There's something off here. Lorna went back through and added in the things that we voted for in October, which were all fund balance. It's line 286. And I took them out, because they came out of fund balance, they're not actually budgeted. And so then you subtract what we actually expended, you get the, you get 340-something, and, but then you took in over 160, so you're back in that, I think that 180 range. I'm thinking he missed something from the October meeting, but maybe I missed something not sitting in front of Trio. So somewhere between 110 and 180,000 is how much fund balance decreased this past year.
So where does that put us, we think, at an actual number?
We were just over a million.
Is this house?
Is the fund balance on there?
All of them.
All of them?
Along with your, your reserve accounts, which, I mean, this is simplistic, but.
Yeah.
I've got roughly 300,000 in reserve accounts, I should be able to pull it from that, and.
Yeah, not quite.
Okay, not that simple, but.
Yeah.
Well, that's where I get confused, because I mean, that's saying like that right there, that's showing that we got 1.5.
And when you subtract that, this is, this is represented in here.
That's what I would say.
Sure, but I'm just saying as a, as an actual, yeah.
Right. So you, pretty easily, you got 1, 1, 1, 2?
I would think, at least.
One, anyway.
A hard one, yeah.
Yeah, a hard one.
Fund balances, you have over a million.
There you go.
It says a million 65 here. So you now probably have around 800.
Or we had, based on this, it looks like we had 1, 2, and now we have 1.
Then you have other, then you have.
Right, but this number right here says 156, right, 158.
Yep.
Then you subtract 3, you're still at 1, 3.
You've got, you've got lots of money.
Right, but there's a big difference between.
This is reserved, you have 3 is reserved.
Right, that's why you have to pull it out.
Right.
This is the total. Every one of these is represented within this total.
Yeah, and I'm not sure why, I think this should be more closer to 1, 3, but let me look. Turn it over to check. No difference, okay.
The actual fund balance would be 1, 3, but the total would be 1, 6.
That's what that's saying.
Correct. Right, well, there's a big difference between 800 and 1, 3.
Yeah.
Yeah, half a million bucks.
That's a lot of paving.
Yeah.
Well, if you want your, I am saying that the general fund fund balance, other governmental funds, and I believe that most of that is the reserves.
It's kind of interesting.
That's out of the report, and you can compare it to this one last.
All of those are buckets, like CDs and different bank accounts. And then down below, some of that is kind of spoken for in those.
That's the reserves.
Reserve accounts.
Right, the reserve account is actually a, it's a spent, it's not spent, it's just allocated.
Yeah, we call it a coffee can, you can't take it out of there. So there's almost 300,000 that's in reserves, but it's represented in that 1.5 and change.
Right. Right, but we have, in my own opinion, we got 1.3.
Well, that's kind, that seems to be the wiggle number.
There's a lot, there's a lot I'm willing to pull out or pay them, but if you're at 800, probably not gonna pull quite so much out.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I think you're closer to 8, there's the future report, so last year.
Well, then that piece of paper is way off.
It is way off. And who, where did this come?
It's different than.
Oh, you're on 2020.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comparing the two.
Oh, 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 oh.
Another way of looking as to what you.
We got, Lorna gave us that, I think, two meetings ago.
Right.
Did she generate it?
I'm guessing she pulled it off Trio.
Yeah, I would, yeah.
You just pulled it off Trio, but it has more to do with cash flow than it actually does with.
Yeah, but it's as of December, should have been December 31st, January 1st.
It says, it says, it says out.
It should be the real deal.
Knowing what you have for money is important.
Yeah, no kidding.
Yeah, but cash flow and fund balance are different, and this is following the checkbook, not.
You can call it whatever you want, all I want to know.
How much we can spend?
How much that money is, period, whether it's.
I'm telling you, I think it's closer to 800, 800,000. Levi's saying he thinks it's closer to 9, and he will have the.
And that's as of January 1, period, that's how much money the town has. Then that's what we want, that's what I'm saying. I don't care what you call it, that's what we need to know, is what that number is.
Okay, so as of December 31st, between December 31st and January 1st, you get this fund balance number. It is not cash on hand, it is, you took in more revenues than you thought you were going to. You've spent less than you thought you were going to, and this is what is left.
Right. But for me, I'm just saying, that number isn't as important to what the checkbook reads January 1.
Yeah, so the checkbook reads right now 240 or 260,000, so.
Total, I'm saying all of our money is 1, and that's how I would like, been trying to look at this every January 1. Does it go up, does it go down? And that's how we.
Well, in this case, you would, it went up, but I don't. No, I'm still saying it's closer to 800,000.
I guess we need to know that number better.
Yeah, because this is.
And you, you have that, right?
This is a lot of, a lot of difference here.
I mean, you're looking at that.
If this setting.
This is more generated.
She generated.
Something close to it.
We took out this generation of the mill rate.
Okay.
She said, how do I do this? I said, I wouldn't, it, it's pretty meaningless. You're playing with numbers that you don't have for numbers on it, so whatever you put in there is pretty.
Right, yeah, yeah, that's, but, so this is what she generated.
Now, if you look.
This is a whole year later. This is 2020, this is 2022.
If you're within $4,000 in the checkbook as of January 1st, you've gained 10,000 in your CD, and you gained 50 cents in your, in your credit union.
Yeah.
Account that you have to have, so that you can have the CD. And then the only changes that should be in here are the fact that you put 500 in the office equipment.
So you're agreeing with all these numbers?
These numbers look.
These numbers?
Yep.
They're matching, from one year to the next.
They're matching, but this does not give you fund balance.
I don't, I guess we're maybe, maybe we're getting Norman Kletcher, maybe is a word, I mean, how much money do we have?
How much money do you, how much money do you have?
Does this represent the money we have?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's what I'm saying, so when.
Yes.
December 31st, we closed the books for last year, that is the number that we have in our files.
That was what's the checkbook?
1.5 million 88,000, and then there's 300, 289,000 that's in reserve accounts from that.
Somebody add this for me. You want me to add something?
That means we spent half a million dollars. She's saying it's 8, and this is 1.5, my dear.
Saying a different number.
3, 1.2.
I'm tracking something different.
She's talking different way of looking at it, she's not looking at the same.
Fund bal, I keep saying fund balance isn't a real number, but it is a real number, but it is not cash in the bank.
Correct.
Number. Now, the CD, so, did she add these all?
Do you want me to add them?
Yeah, because I don't think you should be adding the general. I don't know what adding the, the December balance and the January balance tells you here, that doesn't make sense to me.
Oh, you think those could be duplicate, in some form?
Yeah, I mean, you had one, one day, and you had the other the next, so they're not, you shouldn't add them together.
Those aren't two different checking accounts?
No, no.
Oh, that's a.
Well, that kind of explains it.
Oh, yeah.
Well, you know what, it didn't say anything in the town report last year.
Yep, and the prior year, and you know why we did that? I think, because I did it the year before, and I was copying.
Yeah, but where's the number coming from?
All the number is, is that.
The beginning of the year?
Yeah.
And then the last, last day of the year?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You paid some bills.
Yeah, or, yeah, yeah, but, so these two numbers, the first two numbers cannot be added together.
No.
Weirdly, you will have to use December 31st number and then add the rest. Leave out the first number, January 1st.
Yeah, leave that off.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, got it.
And all I can tell you is I did exactly what was in the prior report.
So we've been putting, we've been double counting the checking account, year after year after year?
If that's the number you've been looking at, yeah.
It's the number everybody looks at.
Well, it's total.
That's what it tells.
Literally, it's added up.
Yeah, total general fund as of December 31st, that is erroneous, there should be a line.
If you're correct.
Yeah, well, I'm adding.
It sure looks like you are.
Yeah.
That's why it wasn't jiving.
I would say so.
It's still a lot of money, but this is.
Yeah, but there's a big difference.
Whoops.
Yeah, yes.
And I don't know what she was tracking, and I don't.
That's a big amount, to go from 475 on January, January 1, and then 12, you know, you're almost 100,000.
Think about it the other way.
130,000, yeah, less.
Yeah, but think about how much we.
No, you gained 130.
No, it was done right in 2019.
Was it?
Yeah.
Was it, how did they write it?
Same way, it just.
Didn't add it.
Just add it, I didn't add it.
Didn't add it. She had the.
That's, that's, that, there should be a line there. That's, yeah.
So if you take.
1.1 now, which makes sense.
What's a few hundred thousand here or there?
1.1, which means you went down 100,000.
Then you lose the 300, so you're down to 800.
Right.
Which all makes that.
You get lose.
No, we were double counting.
Double counting.
We, well, we were, we were provided.
Well, the money's, the money's still, the 300 is still there, because some of that 300 is spendable. Some of that 300 is an observer account.
What 300?
Oh, certainly, certainly. I have.
Oh, 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 yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I mean, you just can't say, you can't say the 1.1, and we have to take off, and we can only use that. We can still use some of it.
Right. So, if we look at reserves.
Can, yeah, okay.
So back to this number, though.
Getting back to this, this needs to be changed.
Because Rick kind of made a comment there, though. When you first look at that, I fully agree, geez, that went down a lot, but then you figure, when we pulled town meeting, how much money do we pull out of the special town meeting total?
195?
Sure, so we took almost 200 out in that meeting, but we, we did a hell of a lot better than we thought we were kind of.
Because you took in.
A lot more money.
ARPA money, the loader money, we took in more revenue sharing, those are, so that's why I'm thinking you're 180 down. I'm not sure what Levi was.
This report needs to be changed.
I.
In the next town report. I mean, I mean.
Lorna asked me, why do I have to do this, why do I have to do that? And I'm like, well, it's because it was the way it was done, but, but take, so I said, take off the bottom piece.
I like the idea of the line right there.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, this should be, this should have a line here.
Yeah, it actually.
Then we know where we started.
A physical line.
And then space, and then you have.
Double space.
Then you add them all up.
But why is there a difference between the, I mean.
January 1st.
January 1st of 2021.
It's a whole year.
December 31st of 2021.
That's a, that's a tall month, that's a tall month window.
From, yeah.
It's not, it's not 20, yeah, it's not 24 hours, what years are old.
And they're really not even relevant.
Well, really, it isn't.
Exactly.
You only need to report it once, I don't know why we have to tell them again next year.
Yeah, because you're not doing the same thing for your.
I would just nix it.
Yeah, the first line.
We reported it last year, we don't need to report it again this year.
That's right, that's just what you, we should, leave that first line off.
Cross it out?
A lot of financials would say you started at 475, and ended at 339.
Right, but we're not doing that, because even the other funds, the CD's not listed as a January 11. You know what I mean? It's not, only that one account.
No, I agree, I'd take it right off, and just keep it simple.
Cross it off, we'll put it in the pile for the.
What if somebody added them all together?
Right.
Well, I can't, I did. And nobody caught it.
Well, I'm glad we worked through it.
Yeah.
I mean, we're still in good shape, but you don't want to think you have 450,000 you don't have.
No, no, that's, so there's 1.1.
And I certainly would prefer that it not be printed in this book.
Exactly, exactly.
Well, at least nobody found it, and you know they normally do, find all the big, and all the little errors too. Okay, so.
All right, I think we're, I think you and, you and the auditor are probably pretty close.
Yeah.
I mean, split the difference.
Yeah, he thinks he's looked at everything, I think he missed something, but he's going to go over it this weekend, and so he'll know, he'll know in a few days.
Somewhere between 8 and 9.
He'll know in a few days whether he's closer or aren't closer. So, then.
Really quick, so then, because we got a couple things in here that we gotta, Jason wants to change some numbers, and he sent me another message.
You started that, Levi.
That's okay.
Yep.
His job.
And actually, I told him for this situation in the office, just send me what you want, and we'll make sure we do this.
It'll be addressed.
So that way they're, but, back up really quick to 41. And I know we talked about this in the meeting, and I'm not sure the right way to go about this, and that's why I'm asking the question. So the $2,000, we talked about taking that all out of the, the reserves, which I'm fine with. So we're gonna just, we'll leave the 2,000 in as far as the budget, and then have a line item that's asking.
Yeah, how does that work?
Or do we leave it?
You need a warrant article that says you're funding this.
From reserves.
This from reserves.
Right. But.
But the problem there is if they say no, then you get it.
Then you can't, then you can't add it.
Right, you can't go back to here and put it in the budget.
And say, and put it.
Yeah, then you have no money for it.
You can't raise it.
Then you have no money for it.
Sure, so what you can, so that's why I wanted to talk about this, are we better off to leave the 2,000 here?
How did you use to work that?
The line item that you want to take that 2,000 out of reserve.
We just told them it's from reserve and we never, ever been voted down.
I don't think you would be.
No.
Because you're not raising taxes?
Right, there you go.
You're spending money you've set aside for the correct purpose.
Yeah.
Right, but the only thing is, is so would you verbiage it that way in the, because that's not a separate item
in that group. You're gonna have to take it, so you have an article that says for general administration, you're going to raise so much. I would say, um, and you're going to take from reserve.
Two thousand out of the, for office equipment.
Right.
But have it all in the same, that one.
One article.
Okay, that's why.
I would do it that way.
I, I just, I just.
I, I, I think so too.
I like that.
It's just a more direct approach and someone's gonna, if, I mean, we're gonna get an opportunity to provide some clarity. What this means is, we've already set aside the money for this.
Right.
That would just ask for permission to utilize it.
Yep.
Right.
Okay. So that was that one, um.
Was that coming town office equipment?
Yep, yep, that would be two thousand off from that one.
Sure, sure.
Why wouldn't we take the same approach with the Rick and the American Legion?
That's, you're just jumping ahead of me.
Okay.
Same deal, so the monument lot, I don't remember what the heck that was, what do we have?
It's eight hundred, I don't, it's.
What number it is?
No, it's way down, it's uh, two forty nine, it's two fifty.
Seven hundred.
Seven hundred. I swear it's eight hundred from this one, hold on.
Actually, sorry, it does, total.
Total, okay.
I keep skipping, so.
Yeah.
That rate there could be the same deal. We, we literally have thirty eight, thirty five, eight ninety nine.
I wanna make one pitch.
Okay.
If you ever want to do something with that complex, i.e. if you wanna put in a walking trail, if you wanna update the boat landing, um, you could hold on to this money as your in-kind match from, what was the guy's name at State? Doug, yep.
Yeah.
And then you wouldn't have to, um, count on people donating their time and, and for your in-kind. But eight, but eight hundred is not going to.
It's not gonna, well, I can tell you, this is my view, okay? So right now, we have this listed separately, which we know is not correct. So, realistically, the American Legion line should disappear and what you're truly gonna see is the monument lot number, that's your paper, my pen.
Oh, that's mine, that's mine, that goes, no, I'm looking through my, right on it, go ahead.
So this is actually gonna be, these two combined is all gonna be under the monument lot going forward.
Yep, can we leave them in separate lines and say the American, and just in preference, the American Legion funds are in the, are in the monument lot, but so then you can track them.
Yeah, but there's.
I don't know.
That's why I don't like this. I don't like what we did, so.
I know, I know.
And the way we awarded that is that those funds can be used on the monument lot and on the rec field.
On the rec field, yes.
So, I would.
And yet it's sitting in the American Legion.
Well, that's cause she was trying to keep it separated.
I know, I know.
That's what I'm saying, you know.
I know, I understand.
So that if I'm not here next year and somebody looks at, looks at this, they know that this is out there. Now then, then they have to do some research and to figure out what they can use it for.
Well, that's why, that's why naming it properly, then no one will, if, if it can be used for both, it should be named for both.
Right, but we didn't do that.
Well, we passed it that way.
Right.
It's that way on the warrant, it's just, this is just how we chose to label it.
No, we said it's going in the monument lot account.
Okay, and then we said what.
Then we said the funds could be used for either place.
Right.
Yeah, we.
That's what I'm saying is.
So we could do.
Three years from now.
Right, no, it needs to be named correctly for what it can be used for.
So you could do like what you're doing for the fire department with the warrant article that says you're, you're putting these two reserves together under the name Fire Department Reserve for.
Yeah, you, so you're saying you wanna put monument lot and rec reserve together?
And American Legion funds together.
You can't, you, that's what I'm saying, that language is no language because we've already taken those funds and they're in the monument lot account, period.
Okay, so you define.
I can tell you what I would like.
Can you redefine what you do?
I would spend them.
I know, I know, you told us that.
Just get rid of it because that's the problem. We have all this stuff, nobody's gonna remember this.
No.
I would just.
And then it gets.
I know.
It gets locked up.
I would take right now, we have, we can spend that on the monument lot and we can spend it on the rec field, that thirty eight thousand, I reserve both of them.
Okay.
Yeah, I would do the same thing. I mean, this, that's exactly what the money was there for.
We're gonna fund the rec field for the next four or five years, hundred percent.
Yeah, and it won't ever get lost. We won't end up with a line like we have in the cemetery here that no one can figure out how we can touch it.
I know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Eighty two thousand dollars just sits there.
Right.
And you won't have to.
And you can't spend it.
Nope. We're only allowed to spend the earnings and nobody knows what the earnings are.
You only set it aside because you think you have something you wanna use.
It's not one, it's two of them. The Thomas School Mysterial Trust Fund, forty one hundred dollars, and the Cemetery Trust Fund, you can only spend the interest.
And nobody knows the basis.
The basis, I tell you. So we really can't.
Can't touch it.
Right.
Well, I do know the basis, I know the ministerial one, sometime in the seventies, they passed an article that X number of dollars is going into trust and it's, they had left in the old one and it was left over from the nineteen forties sometime and they were trying to clean up this, but they put it in. Now.
Could we write an article and move it?
And release it?
Could we write an article and spend that money on, use that for the school budget?
Yeah, I think you probably.
It's better than sitting there saying you're gonna draw the interest, you can spend the interest.
I'd have to go look and see.
Four thousand dollars, you're never gonna get enough interest off that.
No, no.
To print the paper that we're wasting.
No.
You have to go read the article again, I have it some.
The but.
Somewhere.
And I agree, we should, if we can, we should, but we're talking eighty plus thousand in the cemetery account that we can't figure out a way to touch.
So what we did last year was we, we cut it back to thirty percent.
Trying to slow down its growth.
Because that's what the state says has to go in there.
Right.
But nobody at the state or our town's attorney can explain to us how we ever utilized this eighty two thousand dollars.
Nope. I guess you don't. I mean, but.
I don't believe that's true. I'm not doubting you, but what's the purpose of an eighty two thousand dollar pile of money that no one gets to use?
You can't never spend it.
No.
You can't even use that money to mow a lawn.
Nope.
You couldn't do a new road, you couldn't do nothing.
Or, or make a new cemetery.
That's why I don't think it's correct. I, I just don't believe that that's correct. There's got to be.
A way.
A way to utilize those funds legally.
You could also call, um.
I bet towns are just using it and they're not really thinking about it.
Well, I, that's, beg for forgiveness. Once you, you know, you're spending, you spend it, right?
No, I'm upset.
You just put the line item on the warrant, you spend it, and that's it.
Can you imagine when you go down to Bangor or some of these bigger towns with these massive cemeteries and what law it's passed?
Oh, my God.
They'd have to have millions.
Oh, and never be able to.
That's not gonna happen.
It's not gonna happen. There has to be a way to utilize that money.
The legislators, legislature's legal library might be able to tell you. If your lawyer can't tell you, I think, I'd say go with my lawyer first because.
If, if we, if we put a warrant, a article for ten thousand dollars to go down there and do repairs to that riverbank and the town votes to do it, what happens then? We spend the money, we do the repair. Who's gonna say anything? The voters voted to do it, who's gonna sue the voters? I don't believe there's any, as long as we spend it on the cemetery, I don't know how anyone could ever. I mean, people can gross about anything, but.
And do.
I don't think they have any basis.
Well, for me, that's the, you know, those, those two alone, that's the worst part. You're looking at a, we're trying to look at this number and then you got this number down here that in theory you can't do anything with it.
Yeah, we got almost a hundred grand that we think we can't even touch, or anything.
Right. And it's the same deal, I mean. You spend a lot of money every year to mow that lawn and we're, we got an account that you can't use anything out of it.
Yep.
Or we're not using anything out of it.
But based on this experience, I, I fully support your philosophy with this, these funds the Legion donated. Let's get this park up to shape, if you want new chips, if you want to fix the light, this is a great time to get every, that's what this money was given to the town for.
Right.
Yep.
Non-budgetary issue with that, don't turn him loose.
Oh, no, he gave us a nice list, I thought.
No, it was, have you seen his list?
No, and ma- and make sure that we don't have. Make sure we do not have a new field.
No, 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 no.
Well, the only thing that, and honestly.
It all has to be approved.
I mean, yeah, it all has to be approved, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, it all has. The only, and actually, so I did reach out to him and I let him know that, you know, hey, when I told him about anything in the office that's going on, please, you know, we'll make sure that your budget is talked about and we're gonna do what we can do and we're gonna take care of it. You don't need to, you know what I mean, where that's short-staffed.
There are very definitely some things that need to be done there.
Yeah, and I just asked him, I said, I didn't really see an issue with anything that you already proposed to us. The only thing that I did set, notice, just so he knew, was the number he put in for mowing, I think is higher than what the quote actually came in.
Something's funky with it.
It just got split everywhere, it's legit.
Yeah.
Um, that was one thing and I told him I didn't think we needed to spend the amount of money that he allocated to get some of that old women moved. That I thought we could.
But it was only, you were like a hundred difference in your opinion.
It was a few hundred, yeah, I mean, it wasn't that bad. And the only thing that he come back with today was, uh, you know, with the amount of wind damage and storm damage up around there, we had, the only other thing he could think about possibly for now would be another five hundred for tree removal or tree cleanup. Um, but if we gave him what he proposed in that email.
Like he wanted, he wanted to reshingle the two buildings and they were gonna get volunteers to do the labor, they just wanted the shingles.
Do all four doggos, five hundred bucks, I mean.
Do it.
Yeah, and we got the money for the shingle, I mean.
Call contractor, that'd be what, two grand, maybe way to.
Easy, yeah.
You know, so, I mean, he, he went on a kind of a bigger conversation about the road and how, you know, we're gonna have to do something there eventually and, and I did let him know that I, personally, I'm not a fan of that road anymore going up through the middle. That the road worked fine and that we didn't have any issues during COVID when the fields weren't being used by Pirate Rec, but we clearly have a safety issue there when the, the rec is using those fields. He come back and let me know that they did have the speed bumps and they felt that those worked and I told him that I wasn't a fan of the speed bumps. That there's a lot of expensive vehicles and a lot of expensive boats that go up through there and I don't think it's fair to them to have to do that, so.
Especially the boat.
Yeah. Trailers.
That's kinda how that all ended, so I'm not, we didn't really go anywhere with any of that, but.
And it turns out it really isn't an issue of speed.
It's just the traffic.
It's an issue of the kids not paying attention.
The layup, yeah, I mean, when you, nobody's gonna put a road between your ball fields.
And what Doug said at the state level is if you ever want state funding, you have to have a landscape architect.
Yep.
Look at it so that you don't end up with. Hopefully you don't.
I think the easiest thing to do is to tell Pirate Rec when you're using our fields, you're not allowed to park up, pass the front parking law, period. That's their line. That the back parking should be designated for people that wanna use the waterfront part of it as far as the town and the rec field gets to have the parking on the front, that's it. If they can't enforce that, then, then maybe we have to do something different.
Which they won't be able to. Nor will we.
No.
Then maybe they wanna be able to have so many games there. Maybe they can't do five, have every field going at the same time. I mean, to me, it's a scheduling issue, but.
Yep.
Anyway, but if you, did you print that or do you have, so she has that one?
I, they, I had it, but I had trouble putting my hands on it.
All right, I can forward that to you, I have it in the email.
Is he asking for a lot of money?
No, it was like eight grand.
Oh, here it is, right here.
Which is less than.
Which is about where it's always been.
Which is less than.
It's just a question, we don't have to raise the money because we've got the money, that's all. But it's, it's.
Oh, you found it.
Yep.
Cause on some of the um, improvements, I don't like to see a big jump in one year.
Sure.
You know, spread it out over two years or something like that, that's all.
I didn't, well, and it's hard this year because last year was COVID and they didn't do anything, so. That, to me, that number, it falls in line with where they've been over the last few.
As long as they're, yeah, and that eight grand, that's fine.
Is that total, where is it total? Yeah? Electric, yeah.
But I would do the same thing. I would, I would fund that out of the allocated funds out of the money lot.
I think that's.
Would you do it all or just some of the improvements?
Do it all.
I'd do it all.
Do it all?
Since that's exactly what the money was given to us.
Find out in four or five years?
Try to get it, try to, try to utilize it so that it doesn't get confusing.
Because at the end of the day, if you use it all, it's thirty grand. In five years from now, we have to come up with, we've got a million bucks there, what's thirty grand? That's how I.
For matching, if we had matched for a grant or whatever it may be.
Well, it is what they.
I would rather.
Donate it for, I mean.
Right, exactly, exactly.
We didn't promise them that we would.
They said it had to be used for the monument lot and the rec field, period. That's what they said.
That's what they said.
That's what.
And you know what, if this cemetery money could be used the same way for the cemetery, I'd, I'd pay for the mow, mowing, the grubs, everything out of that account until it was gone. Why wouldn't you?
Right.
I mean, if we had, we've got a big repair down there, I would, I'd look at getting some engineering out of it, but. But right now, we can't touch it, so, or we think we can, I, I'm not sure. I mean, that's my thought, but.
The small one, the ministerial one, you, we may well be able to touch depending on how they worded their.
Yeah, that would be nice to get that.
Ah, yeah, I would love to just throw that on the school budget.
Yep, I mean, cause we have the smart trust fund money that has to go to the, you know, for, yeah, you're up to seven thousand.
I mean, how would you be comfort, if, if you call the town's attorney and say, this is what we're thinking and he says, yeah, as long as they vote for it, then let's, let's do it.
Okay.
Would you guys agree with that?
Absolutely. Yep.
You're, all you're doing is getting rid of a coffee can.
That's right, that's right.
You're, you're just cleaning stuff.
That's right.
We're cleaning it up and you're pulling these down and at the end of the day, what's really the difference is, is when we get to the seven hundred thousand dollar number, instead of saying you need four hundred thousand all out of general, maybe now we're gonna be down to through, you know what I mean, fifty thousand less or whatever.
It's exactly right.
But, you're still gonna be pulling, in the end of the conversation, we're gonna pull the same amount of money. So whether or not you're gonna pull it all out of.
Where you're getting it from, right.
Take it all out of general or you're taking more out of some of these accounts and getting them cleaned up and getting them where they need to be.
The only bad thing about spending it is if you've always allocated so much money to these things every budget year, if you stop pulling that money out, now you're changing your um, spending, cause you're not spending that, so when that's all done at some point in time.
You're gonna feel.
Raise twenty thousand more that you haven't done for four or five years or whatever that figure is.
Yep.
That's the reason for the reserve account. You asked me the other day, why do we do reserve accounts? We always wanna spend so much money per department and you put the reserve account in, so when it comes time to buy a new truck or whatever, you're still spending the same amount and you're, you're getting that vehicle without having big jumps in the spending.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. That does make sense.
And you have to look at it, depends on the year, what you have to fund, you know, if you're gonna put a bunch into the road, well, you're gonna cut the reserves down because there's just not enough money to do everything.
Right. But these accounts we're talking about, that's what I'm saying, to me, they're totally different because they're all accounts that that's what they are there for, they're.
Right.
You know, this money is just donated.
Donated money and or.
Yeah, but if you, if you do the whole, if you use it for the whole fund.
Every, for the, until it's exhausted.
Until it's gone, all of a sudden now you're gonna have a big raise.
An eight thousand dollar.
Yeah, whatever, yeah.
Yeah, that.
If you use it a little slower or something like that, but.
Ah, yeah, it, it, yeah.
I'm just looking to.
I don't think you'd do it at your house.
The best we can for as long.
You wouldn't, in other words, you wouldn't, you would just spend the money you needed for the new furnace.
Yep.
As opposed to, in, in our case, we're basically saying we have the money, but we're gonna take more from taxpayers than we really need because we wanna keep it nice and level five years from now or three years from now. And it seems to me, if this money was donated to the town for the purpose of those, the monument lot and the field, we should utilize it. When it's gone, we're gonna have to.
Yeah, we'll be able to do that.
We'll have to raise.
Yep.
Hopefully we get, you know, those shingles roofs will be permanent, probably be twenty, twenty years out of it, yeah.
Right, so that's not a bump, right.
But it is what it is, we gotta run the town. Uh, but it is what it is. We gotta run the town. But for a town our size, even though we've lost four hundred thousand here a few minutes ago, we still have quite a lot of money.
Oh, I would, I would, uh, I bet if you sat down with all the rest of the towns in S A D four, I bet we probably, you could add them all together and no hope you would hit those numbers. You could, you could add an awful lot of them together before you hit those numbers.
So we're gonna do the eighty-nine seventy, um, and we're going to do that out of reserve.
And we're, okay.
And then we're going to do.
She's on Rex, though.
Okay. What line are we on?
That line is two sixty-seven.
Oh, I gotcha.
Okay, um, to go back. We found an issue. Line. Fifty-five FICA.
Oh, fifty-five, line fifty-five?
That is. Both halves of fifty-five. That is twice as large as it needs to be.
Oh, it got funded.
Because. Fifty-five. Because, um, half of it comes out of wages, and then the town has to. Kick in the other half. It's accounted for, the, the wages half is accounted for in this budgeted wage number.
The other half should be over here.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so that's twice as big as it's supposed to be.
So you're gonna be okay with ten to eleven thousand there.
Oh, okay, instead of this.
Instead of twenty.
Okay.
Well, the twenty was for the.
The twenty was if we have to add.
Even if you add the town manager, you will be okay, because if you look, you paid me forty-six. And you paid them fifty-five. It comes out fairly even. You won't, I don't think you'll need more than eleven. You also have to do the CEO, so that took a big jump, but. Um, eleven to, so eleven, twelve thousand is more.
Fourteen and.
Well, you can do fourteen, yeah, if the.
Fourteen.
If the fire department winds up being more than you think it's going to be, even though you're coming back on.
Yeah, everybody's kind of in this bucket.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
All the FICA come out. Yeah, you, you don't wanna be short.
No, I mean, it's much easier. It's much easier to be two thousand over than it is to be five hundred under because you skinned it.
Alright, so if we say like fourteen, we're still what's, six grand less than what we talked about the other night.
Yep.
Yeah, that's huge.
So now you need to think about. I know, Rick, you mentioned to me that we could not put any funds under town manager, line eleven. And then if you, when you hire a town manager, you have a town meeting.
Oh.
What's it cost for a town meeting?
The church doesn't, uh, charge us anything. You have to pay a little bit of time because it's extra hours. And you have to make a few copies. It really isn't.
Five hundred bucks?
Yeah, it really isn't excessive.
So. In a desert way with about a half a mil. Of money.
Mill rate, okay.
About seventy-five grand.
Yeah.
About seventy-five grand.
It's eighty, it was eighty-two last year. It's probably going up. We don't know that yet, but, but just because I believe the valuations went up.
By pulling the thirty grand for the town manager and the health insurance out, you're saving about a half a mil.
Correct. No, I, I guess.
For five hundred dollar.
Yeah, um, I guess, uh, the only reason we don't ever add additional for the chance that we might need it. Than if another employee that we haven't done that. But we're in kind of a unique situation in that we're, we're not even midway through. A trial period. I just think, just from a management standpoint, we should be prepared for, for. To run the town, should this not work out. I mean, we all went into it with an understanding that it's trial period and we'll see what happens. And if we, if, if nothing changes, then we're just gonna, we'll have a half a mil to put back in, that's all. But, and there also, if, if.
This is a way to save at the end, if you need to save some money.
Well, I, I'll, it's not, we're not gonna, we're not gonna stay the way we are no matter what, because what will happen is. If, if she stays in this position, she's gonna get a raise.
Correct.
We, and we all agree that that's likely to happen. Uh, if she doesn't stay in this position, we're gonna pay someone else. And now we're having up to three people, so it's not as cut and dried as it loo-, it's not thirty-five savings. We're spending some of that no matter what. She's either gonna get it or someone else is gonna get it. Not all of it, but.
Some of it.
Some of it. She ended up some of it.
And I just, because of the, because we're just starting this, it just seems like we should build it in and be ready. But. It's not, like I said, it's not something we've ever done before, but we're not, we've never been in this position before either.
We can start and at the very end, if we have to, I mean, we can talk about it, but.
Yeah, I would leave it.
I'm more in favor of leaving it.
I would.
If possible.
You know, I don't know if there were any other. Expendage. FICA was the big one I found that, um. I didn't find much else that we. Had missed. Or that I thought we had done.
Could go in the right direction.
That it?
So then, so what we're really looking at before we have a budget meeting would be, what do you wanna do about paving?
Correct. How much do we wanna pave and how much are we gonna pull to do it? Uh, and I actually, that, that's where the difference between your number and his number matters a little bit.
And he's gonna get back to you next week.
Yeah. I mean, I guess we could make a decision, saying if it's this number of this and if it's this number of that, uh, and we could just.
Yeah, I mean, I can play with the numbers some more. We can, and we can. We can make the decision, like, do we want to leave just a hundred and fifty thousand in the budget line and then play with it? Um, the other thing we haven't mentioned is that there's a hundred and eighteen thousand sitting in. Public Works.
Actually, we had, we were talking about doing exactly the same thing.
We have talked about it, but we need to factor that into what we're.
Yeah, yeah, so if, if we wanted to ask for two, half of it could be that. Which is already allocated towards something. It would be nice to get rid of it.
Well, the Public Works Equipment Fund, you are definitely not, you've been selling all the equipment.
Yeah, no, we've been, we've been getting sick equipment.
You're definitely not buying more equipment.
And I really don't want to entertain buying more equipment.
Right. The use, it requires the use for the fund to be, either you've met the goal or the goal is no longer there.
The goal is no longer there.
And so you can.
Right.
And I, you, that's a perfect way to put it. We've been selling all the equipment. We're down to one bulldozer which will. So let's utilize this money to pave roads. So we definitely would, we'll ask that.
I mean, and that's the big thing that Public Works does is you have the roads.
Like, honestly, I think once you got rid of all your town employees, I think that opened that fund up instantly. If you don't have any employees, you don't need any equipment. You know, we're on the rental business.
Yep, and we don't.
Starts buying equipment to rent to a contractor.
It's an insurance nightmare to.
Right, right. People using it and not employees.
So have we got rid of all the hand tools and all that stuff or?
That's really what needs to happen next. Cause there's a lot of stuff sitting up there that.
I don't even know how good an inventory we have.
Brush saws and all that stuff.
No, and people have borrowed a lot of that already.
There's some, I don't know, but there's a sweeper.
We sold a, a cutting tool to the.
Sanitation.
Sanitation, they wanted it to, you know, cut pavement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was sharing it with the water district.
Yeah.
Yes.
And if you could let Guilford use it too, I could yell that for not including them in the.
Oh, and that just reminded me of something.
Why would Guilford be, why would they yell or be a part of that?
Uh, because they, uh, they're part of the sanitary and the water district.
I understand, but.
Well, so if it's, yeah.
I mean.
Yeah. Yeah, they shouldn't be able to use it.
No.
Private, you know.
Well, it's not ours anymore.
Right, right.
No, we just get to borrow it.
We can use it on our roads when we, or, well, we need to, but, I mean, that was the intent for.
I believe Zach did use it, although he's looking to buy one of his own, so.
Uh, that reminded me, and I don't know if, if Chad submitted this, but he has a warrant article to donate some equipment to, uh, another fire department.
Oh, I haven't seen it.
We need, you, if, we need to get him, it was Willimantic, I believe, and I think it was some old jaws.
Wasn't Willimantic.
No?
Wellington.
Wellington, okay.
One of those W's.
Yeah. Was it old jaws?
Yep. We had a nice newer set of jaws donated to us, and he wants to pay it forward and donate our old equipment to another smaller town, so.
How much is it worth?
Yeah, we had that conversation already.
Oh, okay. I don't see anything wrong with.
Uh, we just all agreed that we thought it would be better to, to be done as a warrant article rather than.
Okay, when we move on to warrant articles, make sure we.
Because we're only approved as sell.
True. Giving, giving away, yeah, I get it.
So that's why we didn't really wanna.
Here.
We all agreed, we thought we probably could have sold it for a buck, but even then it doesn't look right, so.
You better, you better be above the award.
Yeah, make the townspeople.
Yep.
Say yes.
I don't think so.
I don't believe. Well, particularly when they find out we got a new set.
Right, I don't believe anyone would say no.
Especially who we donated.
Yeah.
Somebody donated to us, we wanna return the paper, yeah, I think that'll work. So, have we made any progress? Have I given you any information that you?
No, I'm honestly, I'm really good. I just, I really would like to, I think before we're gonna sit, before I would like to sit here and say. Sure, let's do four, three hundred or two hundred, or we really need to know what that number is, but I think that's the final.
Well, I don't, uh, we can do an either or. I mean, it's, we, it's either gonna, it's either, it's a hundred thousand dollar difference, either way. We're gonna ask for a hundred thousand, or I would take all the money from the, the Public Works Equipment. And so one additional, yeah, are you gonna add another hundred to it or another two hundred to it? Is, I mean, that, I think it's. It should, we should be able to get to an either or.
And you could put. Two hundred in the budget line. Probably. And that would put you thirty thousand over, that would put you half a mil. Up from last year. Well, a third to half.
We had a sixteen handle last year, I'd like to keep it.
Do you, do you verbiage that, that you're gonna take that hundred and eighteen out of Public Works to be used for paving? You're gonna word it, you're gonna put that into, back into general? Cause I can see two different mindsets here.
You wanna put it in the warrant as paving? So you guys, so you guys need to think about if that's what you really want to do.
Yeah, that's what I, I've, it's, because it's, I know it was equipment, but it still, still works.
Yeah, I know. If they say no, it still sits here in that account.
Right.
Account is still there.
Right.
That's my.
Doesn't get, right, yeah.
Either way.
I don't know.
Whereas if you. If they say no to putting it back, it still sits there.
Hundred percent.
Then, I think they more have to say yes to paving. At least they know where it's going.
Instead of just putting it back into the general fund.
Okay, now what happens with it?
I don't see any benefit in just.
Putting it back.
Turning it loose and.
No, 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 I don't think so.
There's gonna be a lot of people that aren't gonna wanna do it, cause.
Because of paving?
Yeah.
Really?
Cause of polishing for equipment to go to afford the paving. I bet you're gonna get quite a few.
Oh, I think there are probably some people that still in the back of their mind think, we might still hire two or three guys someday and buy a bunch of trucks.
We still, there's a lot of people that think you should still have twenty coffee cans out there and all these different reserve accounts and. They, you know what I mean? I understand what you're saying as far as some of them are good and do certain things, but some of these aren't good.
They've. They wouldn't let you sell the town garage, but, but they would let you sell all the equipment.
Right.
Yeah, no, and, and, and it's somewhat incremental. I, I've got a seed feeling that someday.
Yeah.
If that's set there year after year after year, someone's gonna say, this is crazy, let's go ahead and sell.
Right.
Yeah.
But it's also an improvement for the fire department if they need more.
There's options there, yeah.
That's a huge option because where are you gonna?
Oh, yeah.
Honestly, it's a, it's an excellent option for a new town office too. The may, you might, they might be able to utilize some of that pad and. It's all city water, there's all kinds of things that we could do there, so.
Right. It's a good piece, I personally think it's a good piece of real estate, you know, just as far as.
Except that the neighbor's about to be vacant.
Except for the town being a land baron is a really bad idea.
No, no, I get you. Yeah, I understand that.
You know, it's like all the other land that we have, doesn't even.
In that business, yeah.
I mean, as much as I would love to, to get that building next door. Pulling, that's seven thousand dollars a year of revenue that we're gonna lose.
Right.
If we take the building over. Now, I don't know what's gonna go in there.
Right.
Probably won't be the same valuation.
I bet at least something for a business.
Yeah, it's gonna be three or four grand, right?
Yeah, it's gonna be something.
So, at, at that, then you look at, okay, we've got twenty-five acres on that road. Probably we're just better off to put our own little slab in and collect the five grand from them, you know? Uh, so that's, but anyway.
And I think we still get a lot of other little lots that I think we should clean up. I mean, when you go down further before you get to the town line. There's a landlocked piece in the back that, there's no value for the town to ever own that and.
I can't even figure out how we own it.
I don't either, but we do and.
Yeah, I know.
But it's no different than the corner law down around by the numeral sign. Well, what good is that? I mean. The worst one for me yet is across from the post office.
What?
If you go up past the post office, you know that little tiny peninsula on twenty-three that's all weed that you couldn't stand there if you wanted to? That is the town's needed property. Yeah, I mean, there's, there's so much of this stuff that's, I have no idea.
Yeah, have, have you seen this? That's, that's the town's piece right there. So your house, well, you, well, you can figure out where you are. You're here somewhere.
Yeah, like the second one.
Yeah. That's all town.
Yeah, it's huge.
Well, we had plans to make a walking trail through there and improve it, uh, a year, years ago, but that got.
The boy scouts, the boy scouts worked on it.
Well, the, uh, our town office is not gonna infringe on that at all.
No, no.
Well, the, um. They disbanded the board, brought it back together, disbanded the board, and the board just said, okay.
Yeah.
Kinda like the water ordinance.
Money in there, I think it was fourteen or fifteen thousand dollars in there.
In where?
Well, it's, no, it's actually, it's under, uh.
There you go, there's another one.
When is it? Sangable Community Forest.
Yeah.
But it doesn't say which Sangable Community.
Oh, oh, yeah, and this is the town, this is the town run right there.
You could actually spend some of that at the red field.
And this front is here.
Right.
That's the town.
You certainly could use it for your matching fund.
You could use it for the walking trail around down there.
Yeah, yeah.
Through the woods.
My husband will fight you on that because it was, uh.
There's a lot of people fighting us on a lot of things.
It was set up to, um. The monies come from cutting wood.
The sale of timber.
Yeah.
Which is not any different than the sale of a bulldozer. It's just an asset of the town.
Yep.
Yep.
And selling timbers about as profitable right now is.
It's going the wrong way.
Excuse me, I don't know.
We actually did a lot of work on all that and then it just.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's been able to see those trees that you guys all planted on Mother's Day.
So, do we wanna come up with a number or how do you guys wanna approach this? Well, I mean, what's the range? Can we get to that?
What's the range we think we need?
I don't know that. I know that from talking to Lorna, that she has a very rough estimate of a hundred thousand for your in-town streets.
Yeah. Well, that's how we got to the seven. That's really what we need for paving. We know that number.
You do know that number.
Well, that's, I mean, that's what we do know. We're to do in-town and do Silver's Mills.
Silver's Mills, okay.
Roughly seven hundred thousand.
I was told by Guilford that, uh, liquid asphalt went from four hundred dollars to seven eighty.
Ouch!
So you may only, I don't know what that factors into.
We just got these prices not that long ago.
Yeah, it just.
Yeah.
Within the last two weeks.
She also mentioned that, uh, Brian Howard says he's gonna put an asphalt facility in on twenty-three.
I know. He's gonna put an ammo building over here.
I know, but I hope he does the asphalt.
Hmm, I would like to see the ammo myself.
They kinda go together.
Yeah.
Nancy negative here.
No, I'm not negative. I just know.
You like bullets.
A lot of people have a lot of different ideas and different roads they wanna go down and roads turn into forks and they go different directions, so.
Well, I, the asphalt business is pretty competitive, I'm, I'm sure, but. But anyway, uh, i- i- yeah, those numbers were current as we could get them.
Yep.
But not locked in.
Never, they're never locked in.
And if. If they all double, that means we're, we can't do something.
We're gonna pay half as much.
Was that, was that six, both, uh, basin and topco?
Yeah, that was, that was soup to nuts. And, and, um, re- reclaiming as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So it was doing it just like we did McFeeder's.
Any Sangable.
Yep, yep, that's right.
People complain about reclaiming, but in the overall scheme of things, it is not that much money to spend if, if it keeps your roads, um. Longer.
If you take Silver's Mills right now, the last time that was paved about fifteen years ago, those ruts were like that. And we just filled all that with hot top, and so we could pave it, and we're not far from being there again right now. So. You just keep pushing those wedges down, and if you can reclaim it and make it an actual road bed again. Hopefully it'll last longer. So, totally different conversation. The newts went up through with the grader with the teeth and cut all the ice off that road and. Other than the culverts, it's actually passable right now.
Is it?
Yeah, it's not that bad.
We've got some flooding at that spot that we always have it, you know, before you get to Kelly's, that last bridge. It's a mess. I was, I hit it, so, oh. And that's gonna freeze tonight.
Oh, somebody complained to me and I'm like, um, I'm not.
I'm not, I'm not that person anymore.
Sorry, here, I'll give you a phone number.
But you can still complain.
To me, I'd say Silver's Mills between the ruts and the potholes, just from the ice and the melting and.
Oh, yeah, it's a bad time of year.
It was unbelievable, the difference driving home last night. It was almost as good as paving.
He, he calls and complains to me all the time about his road.
Just wanna make sure you know.
Make sure we get something done.
So, um, i- if, if we, uh, if we, I guess the question is, if, if we have nine hundred. Would we, would we go with the seven hundred number and basically pull what? We've got the equipment account for.
One eight, one eighteen.
One eighteen, call it, yeah, one twenty-ish, uh, and maybe another eighty would get us to two? Is that what we're thinking? Or another one eighty get us to three?
I think you gotta go at least the one eighty to get to the.
Right, so, and then your taxation is the remainder, which would be four. Is that? And if that's, so if we agree.
But we don't know what that number yet is at the total at the end, right? That's what I'm trying to say is.
Well, so if.
What, what are you putting in the budget? You wanna put?
If you put seven, if you allocate seven towards asphalt.
Yeah.
And the auditor is correct, then we're gonna, then we're looking at three?
One eighteen out of the equipment and then the one eighty out of general, what you're saying?
For three total.
Okay, so are you saying you, so let's just really quick, like we did, is that how you're gonna word that article? So that's all one?
Yes.
Like we did the other?
I think so. I mean, if they, if they reduce it, um.
So they could reduce, they could say, reduce to one hundred and eighteen, not meaning. If we worded it that way, they could only reduce.
Correct.
They couldn't say.
They'd have to take it all to keep you from taking it from equipment.
Right, they could, they wouldn't be able to say, I wanna, I wanna reduce it by the one eighteen and not take it out of the Public Works Equipment Reserve. They couldn't say that. They could say I could reduce it by a hundred and eighteen, five, ten. But they couldn't put a stipulation in there because we're not allowed to do that.
They're not allowed to do that because it changes the basic thing that you're voting on, and therefore, the people who decided not to come because of. No, cuz they went fishing.
As long as we include it, there's, there's no way to prevent the one eighteen from getting drawn down unless you X the entire request.
Correct, they could, they could drop the whole thing down by the full three hundred.
Essentially cut your paving in half.
Yep, they could do that.
Yep.
Well, they could take the one eighteen out, but then by, at that point, it's just going into the general fund.
No, they would take the one eighteen out, but we could still take the one eighteen out of their reserve. And.
The only way they can protect that reserve is to, is to lower the entire thing to zero.
Not take anything out of general.
Once you've questioned, once you put the question together that way, all they can do is lower the number. They can't lower the context of, of the question.
You can't change the context.
You can't change the context.
No.
It's either a hundred or fifty or whatever.
If they leave twenty dollars in there, we could take it from the equipment fund.
Yeah.
All right.
So, you have the, you're gonna have the warrant to ask to take the money. To be used for paving.
Yeah.
You're gonna state that.
Correct.
Okay.
And one twenty comes from equipment, one eighty comes from reserves, for a total of three hundred. All in favor? And someone says, I wanna, I wanna lower that, I wanna cut it in half, okay, just cut it in half, we can still take the one eighteen from.
Okay, yeah, right, yeah.
They can only lower it.
Yeah, they can't tell you. I know that, but I'm just trying to think how we're gonna do this, cuz our paving is in its own article in the budget.
It's not.
Paving is in a bucket.
It is.
Right?
The paving, well, we have a bucket, and the paving is, some of the paving is in it, some of it is budgeted.
No, no, I understand that, what else is, so what's in that division, that titled, as far as?
Road improvement.
So the only thing that's in that bucket is gonna be paving, nothing else.
In this, in division one fifteen, but you're gonna actually vote on public works.
Right, but there's nothing else in that, where are we?
Public works, this is. Two twenty, two twenty.
That's what I wanna get to, is what is actually we voting on, and that's really how we need to.
Generally, you do a public works, um, article.
Road improvement.
Which is around four hundred. Show us our article from, you know, our public, you, just as, please, please. Just how it's. All right, where are my glasses?
Yeah, they're right, see, they're hidden on your head.
Yep. Oh, this is a different year because we didn't, we didn't do any budget votes because we stayed. There should be a, a big huge disclaimer put on this.
We vote on Department Twenty Public Works.
We do, and then you usually, so. Article twenty-five was to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for public works, not to exceed four forty-one, nine oh five. And then the very next article is to see if the town will vote to appropriate a hundred and fifty thousand from the general fund for the purpose of paving.
There you go.
So you don't wanna save from the.
So that's what I'm saying, so if we do it that way, what we need to do is we're gonna ask the town for seven hundred thousand dollars in that article.
Was that a subset?
No, no, look, Dale, this, this works, but I see.
It is.
No, no, they're completely separate, so one is public work, so this article twenty-five is public work.
Correct.
So what number would we put there? One?
Seven, no.
It would be. The number you would put there would be. Is one fifty.
No, that's to appropriate the one fifty from the general fund for paving.
That's separate from your public works, you've already got a hundred and fifty in that four forty-one.
Saying, so, do we put? Seven hundred on the public work side, then you're gonna ask for three hundred, one eighteen.
Let me ask you, Dale, the one fifty that's asked for in that next article, is it included in the number above?
No.
No, it isn't, and that's how we'll do it.
So that year, so that year you had three hundred thousand.
Gonna have seven hundred thousand in it.
That year you had three hundred.
Have six hundred.
It's not additive, it's, I mean, these two aren't.
Add on.
In that, with, with those, with those two articles, you have a three hundred thousand dollars for paving.
Exactly, so are you gonna, that's what I'm saying, are you gonna have all your seven hundred in this article? Then ask for three hundred to cut it down, or are you gonna say budget four hundred thousand dollars in this article? And then in this article, you're gonna ask for another three hundred thousand to be covered.
Which is what they did.
Which is.
That's what they did, that's what I'm asking you.
Wasn't that us?
Yeah, so was us.
But that's what I'm saying, but is that what, how you wanna do that?
This is.
It's consistent with what we've done previously.
This is why I did these A and B. Because, because in, A, you had a hundred, in, in public works, you have a hundred and fifty thousand. And you did it, I did it across the board, a hundred and fifty thousand this year, in B, there is three hundred thousand in this public works budget. Now, putting it in your budget, the bigger the number, the more you increase taxes.
Correct.
So, you, if you wanna put it outside the budget, you do an extra.
Which is what we did there.
Right, but right here, that was three hundred thousand is what we budgeted.
Yeah, you're confused because Lorna added one fifty, she added, it's one fifty.
Correct, but that's what I'm saying, we actually budgeted three hundred.
No, we actually budgeted one fifty. So that's that number.
Wait a minute, we budgeted three hundred in this here, then we added the one fifty in the special.
Oh, that's.
So you, that's, I know what she did, correct.
As well, I mean.
I understand, but what I'm saying is, is this is budgeted at three hundred?
No, one fifty.
Because of that one fifty come out of reserve.
Because the other one fifty came out of, not reserves, but out of general, undesignated.
Right, correct.
And then we went and asked for another hundred and fifty.
Then we went back again with the special.
Right.
Which got us to three hundred approximately.
But it's still, I mean, it's budgeted, the difference is, it's actually budgeted, but it's not through taxation.
Exactly.
Correct.
Then that's why you break them up, otherwise, you're linking it all to taxation.
Right, and that, yeah, well.
You're not.
Well, with, with this, with this form you are because, yeah.
The way this is, you could do this either way you want, you could put it all in one, and then you're gonna just ask for it to be paid separately, or you could do it that way. Doesn't make any difference, it's just verbiage.
Well, if you, uh, if you lump it together, I find you get more problems. I have a question. Yes. This public works number four hundred, does that include the plowing?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay, okay.
That's why it is.
It's everything in public work, so you gotta go all the way back to all of it.
Right.
That's another reason I like breaking out the paving, because if they, if they wanna cut it, well, all right, so we don't pave anything. But if they, if they just cut it in half, now you're like, we gotta snow pile, folks.
Well, well, that's exactly, that's exactly right. You know, they can't, that, that number, you've gotta be really careful, cuz I mean, we have to plow, and we, and we have a plowing contract.
Well, they can do whatever they want.
Yes, they can.
Right.
Honestly, but that's why they also know what we're doing, I mean, they're gonna ask, all right, so, out of that number, how much of that was for paving?
That's why, that's why I like separating and telling them, we're gonna spend three hundred on paving.
Paving.
If, and if they say no, then they don't get paving, I mean, that's, that's fine.
Well, sure, on the Silver's Mills route.
Correct.
And they're all gonna be there in favor of paving.
Yeah, they'll show up this year.
And, and public works, so there's plowing, there's grading of dirt roads.
It's all, all the prep.
All the sand, salt, sand, blah, blah, everything, everything.
Well, the other, so it's almost to the point, you can leave it all lumped together, or you could actually bring your paving out separately.
That's what I would do.
You don't even have to have paving in that.
Public work, you don't have to, you could make, you could make the next article.
Division fifteen is road improvement.
Yep.
Do road improvement separate, paving only.
And you could make, if paving only a hundred and fifty to, um, raise and appropriate, and a hundred and fifty to.
Sure.
Get from undesigned it, I mean, that would be the same thing, show it, show it a little differently. Yeah, it breaks it down and makes. Makes, which is easy, again, did it that way because that's the way they've done, done previously. Not, not saying that that's the best way to do it.
Or the only way.
Or the only way to do it. Right. Right.
But if you leave them in two different buckets, you might have people that say, well, these, if we knock it, if we knock this one down, it's not hitting my taxes, and leave this one full. Take it out of reserve, and there's two different ways of looking at it.
Yep, because they don't know, cuz they aren't, yeah, I don't.
The bottom line is, if, with this proposal, we're not looking at much of a tax increase this year. Our budget's gonna come in pretty darn close to last year.
With three hundred thousand?
If, if they're ready to take it from four hundred thousand.
Neither, wait a minute, so, okay, with a hundred and fifty to raise and appropriate. With, and then you add a hundred and twenty from the public works.
We're saying three hundred total.
And then you're.
You're only four, right, you're only at four fifty. You're, you're.
You were talking four hundred.
You're gonna have to, this is gonna have to be, to do what we're saying at this moment.
Four hundred.
This needs to be four hundred, and then this article needs to be three hundred, one fifty and one eighty.
Yeah, they have to balance to seven hundred thousand.
Correct.
That's how I envision it.
That's right.
Yep, so with that number at four hundred thousand.
You're gonna raise taxes.
That's what we need to know, what's that number gonna do?
I ran one fifty and three hundred, I will go run two hundred, four hundred, up to five, and see how, what.
We ain't going five.
No.
Okay, so I'll do. Three, up to four.
I don't like, I don't like it being at four, but if, if I knew the auditor was gonna come back closer to the nine hundred. Then I would push more out of reserves to get that number down, but I don't want to. I don't wanna go more on reserves until we know an official what that number's gonna be.
So you're gonna take. More from reserves, it's been a million dollars, but now, using Brady's formula, we're at nine hundred thousand.
Well, we're still at, we're still at one, yeah, as a total.
As a total, so you're gonna go to that nine, and you're gonna take from that nine?
Yep.
As long as it's going into things that are like infrastructure, asphalt.
We're never gonna get ahead on paving if we don't.
That's a.
No, I don't want it just to, because the school left a tie, we'll take fifteen.
Yeah, no.
No, that, cuz you're just gonna bleed it down. Well, that's kinda the way I feel about a new town office, if, if, if you spend a few hundred grand on something that saves you money for decades, that makes total sense.
Yes, the capital improvement.
But just to spend it because you wanna save money one year, you didn't accomplish much.
Gone.
Yeah, that's right.
Even though we paid it, there's all these arguments, but.
I get it, it's taxpayer money, but it's still, it's changing your tail.
With, you know, there's so much we can do for, with it right now, we're, we're fortunate, so.
Yeah, the other side of it though is like what you just said, that increase on for hot top. That, to me, is driving more to get to seven hundred, because this, this stuff is just keeps climbing.
Right, it's not going down.
And if we don't.
Hasn't gone down.
Right, exactly, so we, and we did a good job to spend what we did last year and got good.
Yeah, you know, as it turns out, we, that was a heck of a deal, because you're not gonna buy it for that way, you probably never pay that again.
So it's good we did that.
But, anyway.
I mean, obviously Silver's Mills is bad, in-town needs to be done.
Another thing, Rick, is, uh, cash, cash is worthless, in the sense that it's going backwards fast. I- i- inflation probably is closer to eight or nine percent, so that means, you know, on a million dollars, you lost ninety grand. So you better off to put it to work.
That's right.
Right.
And put it in asphalt, right.
But particularly if you're improving your situation, cuz you're gonna be able to do less with it next year.
Right, that's exactly right.
So screwy right now, we don't know what we're gonna do, but if you gotta do a new town office, then I'd make sure we have plenty, I don't know what our. Minimum amount is for cash flow to keep that going.
Well, we do have a cash flow issue.
No, we don't.
Well.
I mean, not with all this.
We have no penalties to move out of our CD, we don't have an issue.
Yeah, we don't have any.
True, true.
That's all liquid.
We, we're just, we wanna utilize every penny we can to grow our interest.
I guess that's all I was hitting at, is at some point, you're gonna have to.
Can't wait.
Yeah.
Cuz that would mean that we're probably building a new town office.
But even then, I mean, you know, I've said it before, if a push comes to shove, and. Do I take it out of the CD, or do I wait two weeks before I cut a check on the school board? I would wait two we- two weeks before I cut the check for the school board.
Let them wait.
They're still gonna get it, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't pull, I wouldn't pull, uh, fifty grand out of the CD.
All that penalizing you is interest.
Yeah, I know, but, but it, you know what I mean, if you can play your cards.
Yeah, no, it's not even.
I'm not saying screw anybody over or not pay anybody, but, right, there's no penalty if you're a few weeks late on your school board, on the school payment. So, I would take more advantage of that than I would before I just pulled out of the CD.
Yep.
Hey, we're, we're not in a position, uh, we have a neighboring town that just bought a fire truck and financed it for thirty-five years, so, I mean. We're not ever gonna do anything like that, at least in the foreseeable future.
We got a neighboring town that financed two employees for thirty-five years, so.
Yep.
Salary for a year. For thirty-five years.
Okay, so are, are we pretty much nailed down there? I mean, we're waiting, it's gonna wiggle a hundred either way, maybe?
Yep.
Could be fifty, whatever, but.
Yep.
I'll run the numbers and do them like this again, I will take this out because. This will just be the, whatever we cut from, like the. We didn't cut forty-four from administrative, we only cut six or. So.
But your term is up on the sanitary district, so it's gonna be put on the warrant?
Oh, you're on there.
Oh, I am, okay.
Well, I didn't write your name in, but I could if you'd like me. Like me to. Are we really having two full terms for, two, three-year terms for board members is, for school?
I think the only one that's on the school board right now is Danny and, is Clint's wife still on?
Unless she dropped off after I got done.
I know she, I knew she got on, but I haven't heard anything since, um, so I'm not even sure, but I.
I talked her into it, I don't know if she liked it, stayed or not.
Yep. They had to knock me from the floor, right?
Yeah, I can do that.
Yeah, take care of that.
We got you covered.
On the school board too?
No, I do not.
Too big a board.
They could get a two-part there. Oh, it's, it's not a headache you want.
I did, that was, that was all right.
School board, I just felt like a thing.
Okay, Friday night?
Yep.
What's next?
Um, the only other thing that I, just to try to help with this conversation, um, if we could find out anything from. Legal, or we just wanna wing it and do it, I would pull some out of that cemetery fund from Owen, if we possibly could, just to help us get.
I, I totally agree, I totally agree, put it on a warrant, if they pass it.
Yep.
We spend it.
Yep.
Yep.
It's their money.
I'm just.
Unless somebody can find me a statute that says you can't spend your own money on, on the actual thing it's designated.
I mean, I, I understand the, the point of saving, but when you, when, when the interest is. Yeah.
You will never, you'll.
You'll never be able, like, you can never be able to.
I still question if that's a hundred percent accurate, there's got to be some.
You mean if the funding, that was, yeah, that it, it was overfunded.
Yep, now I can see the state actually saying.
At some point, we decided that we would put a hundred percent of our cemetery stuff in there, and it's like, well, you can't ever get it back.
Yes, so when, I wonder when that happened.
No, and I've heard people were concerned that, oh, this is gonna affect per- perpetual care, like, no, I can't even use it for that.
No. No, that's, yeah, that's what you would say.
That's what you would think it was for.
That's exactly right.
Right.
Well, no, you can't use it.
And when you, perpetual care is actually the mowing and the.
Right, right.
It's not.
Fixing the road that needs to be fixed.
It's not fixing the stones at all.
It's not?
No.
No, it's just mowing and keeping your cemetery. So basically, you're doing perpetual care when you mow your cemetery.
There was the time where if you didn't pay for it, you didn't get mowed. The one next to you looked nice and neat, and the other one was all weedy.
That's bad.
Now, we just do everything, right? Okay.
Yeah, I would try to do that. I, I would do that.
Yeah, I would.
I just cannot, still can't fathom the idea that you cannot use that money on the cemetery, to do what we do.
On perpetual care.
On perpetual.
In terms of school, you have the, the smart trust fund money, maybe we could do the ministerial, and you also have. The school cut our payments this year, so you, we didn't spend ten thousand that, um, we budgeted for.
Oh.
So that's automatically already there then?
Automatically goes towards.
It's all right, county's gonna take it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only other thing, as far as these go, that I would like to see is, I would like to see, and as we all know, we talked and chatted about that, but. I would like to see an article where these two fire department accounts turn into.
It's in here already.
Yep, turn to one, being fire department.
Yep.
Reserve, or how we're, we're now allocated towards that, just fire department.
The library's return funds, I don't, that doesn't need to go before the town, to take back unused money.
Is it a donation?
Is it a donation?
I say it's a donation, because once you give them the money.
It's theirs.
It's theirs. They're a different organization, so to take it back, you have to accept it.
Roundy said, oh, we calculated wrong, sorry, here's ten thousand back.
Yeah, but the other issue is too, is if that would've happened December thirty-first, then you would've been okay, but now you.
Well, but the, whether you need a legislative approval to take back unused funds.
I don't think you need legislative approval, I think you guys just say.
That's fine, that's what I'm getting at. I don't want a warrant article. Just take it, thank you very much.
To accept the ten thousand dollars from the Segalville Library.
Okay, but is that how they, how do they verbiage it?
They just returned unused funds?
Okay, then that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So they would normally say, here's ten thousand dollars as a donation.
No, not to my knowledge. Uh, and when I talked to Sarah, she said they're returning unused funds.
Okay. It's so.
Which makes total sense, they only got halfway through the year.
Right, so, but that's for, for last year?
No, we just paid them at the end of the year.
Yeah, we just paid them, we just paid them, cuz I remember.
Well, the place wasn't open for most of the summer.
And we didn't pay them until after the August meeting.
Correct.
Because, until then.
Yep.
It, that's what, that's how it was explained to me, that it was a return of unused.
Last year's funds.
Yep, they, they spent about half of what we gave them.
Okay.
So, and then they gave the rest back.
Yeah. Overpaid your late bill, I mean, it's credit on your account, you get it back, was the difference.
That's the way I looked at it.
Yeah.
So you don't wanna take a vote?
We just did, we did.
Second, all in favor?
Yep.
All right, it's done.
Okay. Anything else?
The overages, did you wanna vote on the overages?
Does that have to go back to the auditor, and they gotta do anything there, though?
For the overages?
No, for that ten thousand dollar return off last year.
It's revenue, do you consider revenue for this year?
No.
No.
So, I don't know, that would be an auditor question, how we need to do that. This is what has happened, and they need to tell us where you put it, whether it's last year or this year.
Well, it is revenue this year, though. I mean, we didn't have it last year. We didn't know we were ever gonna get it, and it was never on our budget for last, you know what I mean? It was gone. So now it's come back this year.
I think that's cleaner.
Yeah.
Because you, because it went out, you cut the check for nineteen-six.
Yeah.
And.
And it's come back this year? It's this year's revenue.
Just, it's a bookkeeping issue, is really what it is. That's why I said I've just called the auditor to.
Yeah, they'll follow, they'll tag it.
Yep. And with stuff like that, we just start a folder.
It makes no difference.
Next year, well, we'll, we'll have ten grand we didn't think we were gonna have.
Right.
That's right.
Well.
Cuz we thought we spent it.
Right. Cuz I don't, they're not gonna be able to put it on last year, cuz the book.
No, no, that's it, that's, that's it.
That would make sense for it on last year.
The overages.
I just keep writing on your paper.
That's right. The overages.
He never brings his own paper.
I know. Do we have that?
Yes, I gave a copy to.
Mike.
Mike. So I wouldn't have to keep track of it, it gets under here. Oh, it is, there it is, right there.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I've seen this before. So, um. We have, we have overdrafts for the twenty twenty-one budget, monument lot, five oh six oh five, five hundred and six dollars and five cents. Health and sanitation, nine thousand two hundred seventy-six dollars and ninety cents, and the fire department, two hundred seventeen dollars and five cents. For a total of ten thousand dollars, which leaves a balance of fifteen, one thousand five hundred sixty-five dollars and sixty cents. For the fire department, forty-six thousand nine hundred seventy-one dollars and fifty-three cents to Roundy's. That was used to pave in twenty twenty-two for a total of forty-eight thousand five hundred thirty-seven dollars and thirteen cents. For the town to vote on as overdraft article.
But the Roundy's, is that technically overdraft? That's what.
Hasn't been spent yet.
Correct, hasn't been spent, that's a bill.
It's money due, whereas the fire department has been spent.
An overdraft?
Yes.
And may I make a correction, Mike?
Yes, you can.
Maybe it does say twenty twenty-two, but it was twenty twenty-one that Roundy's.
Well, no, it says will be paid in twenty twenty-two.
Okay, okay, got you.
And then I guess that kinda is the differentiator, whereas the fire department was paid.
Right.
This hasn't been yet, but it's due.
Right, that's, that's.
To put it as an overdraft for. Twenty twenty-one.
So, um, so do we need to make a motion to accept all, is that the correct?
Well, do we wanna break those apart, or does it matter?
Well, you're, you have to accept them, and then we can put them on the.
Okay.
Warrant, however you best think that. But technically, you legally have to pay them, they can't say, no.
Well, the warrant's a little clunky, because right now, the, the way we did that, the overdraft for the fire department is actually seventeen hundred.
It's not accurate.
It's not, that's not.
Well, what she did is she burned up her undesigned.
Con, no, she burned up her contingency.
Yeah, yeah.
Contingency, right.
Yeah.
That's why she split it into two.
It's split this way currently on the warrant.
I like that better, cuz that shows, that's the real numbers.
Yep, yep, yep. It doesn't split the fire department, yeah, 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 I like that.
This is, this is what they all were, we have ten thousand dollars of contingency.
I agree with you.
That's gone, this is the balance.
That's very complicated. It doesn't work, doesn't work.
I mean, we understand what it is, but not everybody else reading that's gonna understand it.
The way.
Yeah, that, yeah.
Yeah, that works, that's better.
But that all comes from surplus.
Yep.
We don't add it on to taxation.
Well, no, it's, it's gonna be.
It's money we owe.
Particularly the, the Roundy's portion.
Do this how you wanna do it. You can, you can nail it on the budget for taxation, or you're gonna take it out of surplus.
Which just means your paving number got, I mean, it's all just like paving another fifty grand.
You're just moving money around. At the end of the day, you're still gonna do what you're gonna do.
I think it depends on where we end up with the mill rate, as to which direction we go with that.
I honestly, I would just, it doesn't matter, right?
Well, you're gonna have to know for the warrant.
Yeah, I would, this would go, yeah, the, the one we're gonna move is the paving, we're only gonna move one.
Correct, so where do you want this? Do you want this to hit taxation or reserve?
Yeah. I mean, that's, it was supposed to be that way.
Okay. So have that hit taxes?
I mean, there's a, there's a, there's a combination of errors that created this.
Yeah.
One was we paid a bill early, one was we.
The wrong quarter.
Do you understand that better than?
The health, health and sanitation, when we figured how much we needed to, um. Raise for the October special meeting. I figured that the bill that came in December would hit.
January.
January. And I figured it that way, because we'd already paid several months twice, and just figured that that would be the best way to handle it. And while I believe I told one of that, it probably didn't.
Correct.
When, when the bill came across your desk, you probably didn't remember that.
And she paid it.
And she paid it.
Prematurely.
Well, she could've just waited a week.
It was still, it was still actually owed, but it was still actually owed.
Sure.
It was owed in December.
It was, he was just gonna stretch the budget to the.
Because we'd already paid twice for.
Sure.
May, and we'd already gone from paying twice in a year to paying monthly, so.
Yeah, it just got.
The million dollar question for me, with the changes we made, the number that's on health and sanitary right now. That is from January one to December thirty-first, what is gonna be owed and what should be paid within this year?
She should've taken twelve times the monthly.
I just make you sure, that's.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
Because one side.
Do we have extra now?
Yeah.
Well, that's what I. Well, no, because that, it was two, this was explained two different ways. The way you're explaining it to me now makes. I understand what you did, but the reality is, it really should've got paid in December anyway. We didn't really pay it early.
Well, it's.
We should've, cuz it was December's bill.
It's December's bill, so.
That's what I'm trying to understand, because if December's bill really doesn't get paid till January, then we really don't have an overdraft.
We al, yes, we always paid in about February for June through December of the prior year. And then come July, we paid for January through June, and come next February, we paid.
Okay, gotcha.
July through December.
Gotcha.
And so it, it's often paying monthly really screwed.
Yeah.
But you know what I'm trying to say?
I do know what you're trying to say.
Cuz.
So you want.
I can kinda listen to what.
You want twelve months to be paid.
In the twelve months.
Two thousand twenty-two.
Or, what we're saying is an overdraft.
Isn't really.
Is it really an overdraft? Cuz it was billed in December, supposed to be paid in January, and we paid it in December. So it's an overdraft, but it isn't really, because the nine thousand, what you did pay, you're just gonna, you're gonna take your.
You don't have to pay it.
Your twenty twenty-two number's gonna come down.
So it's a, it's a Levi question.
No, it's, no, it's a sanitary question. What's in our number, and how is the billing cycle, and when should that have got paid? And are we actually a month ahead? So that, what you're saying is an overdraft last year, was actually January's payment that you would've paid, so.
That we don't have to pay now.
Sure, you only budget eleven months now instead of twelve.
Trampus.
I think Trampus can clarify every bit of this.
But regardless of how, would, we, I think the way it's written there is the way it should be presented, not this.
No, no, that doesn't.
I don't know if, if Sarah just pulled that up so that. That's not it.
That's not it.
Even with your glasses, you could tell.
Yep, I could tell I didn't want.
But either, I mean, if, if that be the case, that makes a hell of a difference between.